This is a Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Pursuing to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed in the agenda will also be done so through remote participation. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website, www.shrewsburyma.gov/coronavirus. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by visiting www.shrewsburymediaconnection.org. No in-person attendance of meetings of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite our best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To participate in the public comment portion of this meeting, dial 1-747-248-7354 and enter the following PIN, 153991490. Please mute your device until the Chair of the Board of Selectmen addresses your agenda item or opens the meeting to public comment. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
John Samia.
Present.
Maurice DiPaolo.
Present.
James Kane.
Present, good evening.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kristin Lass.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you and take care not to share your screen on your computer unless asked for by the chairperson or staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Either Chair will introduce each board member or staff member who has a lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with the item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comments or questions. I will then call upon members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps to generate accurate minutes. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Take a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
The next, Mrs. Cassavant, aye. The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the July 14th, 2020, meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number three on the agenda is announcements and reports. I have a few. We held a very successful outdoor town meeting on Saturday with 155 town meeting members joining us to complete the business of the town. So it took about four hours. The weather was perfect. Many thanks to our town manager, assistant town manager, moderator, and the town staff that worked so hard to make this meeting possible. And a special thanks to Shrewsbury Media Connection for their continued support and dedication in keeping all of us connected while we work our way through this pandemic. I'd also like to announce that this Thursday, August 13th, will be Food Truck Thursday at Town Hall. There will be three food trucks featured from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Some of you might have remembered that we were approached by local food truck owner Jim Olenbach from Shishka Berry, looking to bring his food trucks and others to neighborhoods. The town manager and I worked with Mr. Olenbach to come up with a solution that would keep the food trucks off of neighborhood streets but still allow an opportunity for this to go forward. So similar to what happens with the farmer market, where it's organized by just a private citizen, Mr. Olenbach is organizing the food trucks up to 4:00 on Thursday evenings from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. outside of Town Hall. And this week, it will be the grilled cheese truck, Shishka Berry, and the Dogfather. They are doing online ordering through their website so that people are able to just pick up their food and take it away in order to enjoy it off Town Hall property. Given the Governor's orders recently limiting outdoor gatherings to no more than 50 people, we want to be mindful of that and encourage people who do order food to take it with them to go. There will be masks and social distancing and signage to remind people of the orders. And then I also, on a less positive note, would like to note the passing of John McDonald, longtime town meeting member and teacher at Shrewsbury Public Schools, whose passion for video production and public access through the Shrewsbury Media Connection will forever be remembered. He was involved in producing live TV coverage of many of our government meetings, including the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, the finance committee. And I know that I personally speak on behalf of the Board when I say that his steady presence at the beginning of our meetings and his telling us when it is time to get started at 7:00 p.m. will certainly be missed. So, Board members, does anyone else have any announcements this evening?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Picking up on your comments on town meeting, I was not surprised at how well it went, but I thought it afforded us an opportunity to take a unique chance to undertake bundling and a few other aspects of town meeting that I really thought went well. I was concerned about the bundling and a couple of other aspects, but it all worked out extremely well when people wanted to debate an issue. We certainly had the debate. The bundling impeded no one. So what I'm wondering is if you would be so kind and my colleagues would agree to put an item on our next agenda so that we could have a discussion of the Board reviewing what they thought was positive and if there were any not so positives from this unique town meeting, and forward a letter to the moderator asking that he consider taking whatever steps are necessary to undertake certain procedural changes. I went from being a skeptic of bundling to now I would like to garner your support, support of my colleagues, and asking that the moderator pursue that in whatever technical changes that we need to make as a town. Bring it before town meeting amongst perhaps others and see what changes folks want to do. I thought it went really well, and I think bundling and a variety of other aspects are worthy of further consideration. So unless my colleagues have an objection, I would appreciate you placing that on a future agenda so that we could have a discussion and possibly agree on sending a letter to the moderator.
It's a good suggestion, Mr. Kane. Any other Board members want to weigh in, or are there any objections to following up on Mr. Kane's request? All right, very good. And I'll make sure that we follow up on that. Thank you. Anything else for announcements? Oh, we have more.
One other request. I've been talking to the manager about this, spoke to the assistant manager today about it, but, you know, and sometimes things become more clear when they're literally in your front yard. But I have had a concern for several years that from time to time, certain contractors aren't perhaps either living up to our standards for closing the roads at the end of the evening or certainly before a weekend. And as a result of the water job on Main Street and now the work on Main Circle and Walnut Street, I find myself regularly disgusted with what is either a core standard on our end for how roads should be left for the weekend or even at the end of the day, or a failure to conduct regular and thorough inspections. I think the, if you drive Main Street westbound, you can't be happy with the way that road has been left by our water job. It's not the Commonwealth itself. The final paving that went on, I think, is pathetic. And what we've lived through along Walnut Street as well, with six and eight-foot rocks, not after a driving rainstorm, but just as part of their close-up, the amount of dust, gravel left on the roadway. Again, either we should review our standards to make sure that our standards are reasonable, or we need to review how we're going about the daily inspection of leaving a road. You know, everybody expects an amount of dust. It's hot, it's August, that's fine. But when you literally have six-inch rush as a regular course of action, I don't think that's appropriate. So I would ask that the assistant manager take it back, and at a future meeting, the manager provide us a brief on the standard in writing so we don't have to take up the whole meeting time, but a standard of what we have, how we go about inspecting it, et cetera. I'd also like to understand our standard for police details. Walnut Street is a very important road in my, not just because I live near it, I admit, but it's an important roadway from Route 9 up and back and forth. There's an assisted living complex on Route 9, and there has not been a consistency relative to police detail, even though the road is completely closed. So I think it would be worthy of the Board to just get a memorandum from the manager explaining what our standard is for that shutdown of a major road as well. So with the indulgence of my colleagues, I would ask that the assistant manager follow up on that with the manager upon his return.
Very good.
Thank you.
Ms. Lass, did you want to follow up on Mr. Kane's request?
Mr. Kane, thank you. I did follow up this morning and this afternoon with the Water and Sewer Superintendent to express your concerns. Again, I was aware of your concerns earlier, a month or two ago as well, and we will certainly take your comments this evening into consideration and get as much detail to the Board of Selectmen at, hopefully, the next meeting to your satisfaction.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, and I'm sure you will. My only point is either there's a failure of inspection at the end of each day, or I think we need to revisit our standards. I'm hopeful that it isn't the first, so I would like to understand what the standard is and to see what steps we ensure, particularly on a Friday, to ensure people aren't without a reasonable driving surface. You drive down Walnut Street now, it's, I would argue, in the case of certain conditions, it's dangerous. So thank you very much.
Certainly. We'll definitely review that with the Department of Public Works and the manager and get back to the Board and change course if necessary.
Thank you. Anything else, Board members, for announcements? All right, then that brings us to the town manager's report. Ms. Lass.
Thank you, Ms. Cassavant. I have several announcements this evening. I would, again, like to echo your comments related to town meeting and thank the town meeting planning committee, the public building staff, town meeting members, and other town staff and others who made this unique town meeting possible. Again, I do think that it was a great success. We were very happy that the majority of town meeting members actually reviewed the pre-recordings of the articles that we put forth. And again, look forward to making sure that the next town meeting is streamlined or works even better than this did. So again, wanted to recognize all of those who were involved in the planning and the success of the town meeting. I also wanted to take a minute to recognize the service of Mr. Jim Arnold. He had provided weather services to the town of Shrewsbury for many, many years. He notified the Board and other town staff that he was officially, officially retiring. We'd gotten word from him a few years ago that he was retiring but still continued to receive his weather updates. And when we didn't receive an update from the hurricane and then received his official retirement resignation email the day after, it became evident that he's taking time to enjoy himself and his family. So we would like to thank him for his services to the town related to those weather forecasts. And finally, I just wanted to remind the Board and residents related to precautions for triple E. You may have seen in the news that there was a spraying in Plymouth County last evening. The town of Shrewsbury did have elevated triple E cautionary measures in the summer of 2019, and we expect that that may come to fruition in the summer of 2020. So the Board of Health has put out various amounts of educational materials related to protecting yourself with long-sleeved clothing and pants, protecting yourself with bug spray and others, and staying indoors when possible from dusk till dawn. I know that it gets a little bit confusing because with COVID, we're talking about staying outside, staying far away from each other, so please continue to read the advisories carefully and choose what course of action is best for you and your family moving forward. But we will continue to push forward these triple E measures and educational pieces throughout the rest of the summer and until the hard frost comes, whenever that may be.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, any questions? Okay, then we will move on to item number five on the agenda, which is the coronavirus update from the assistant town manager.
All right, I am going to share my screen. All right, so thank you for giving me an opportunity to share the coronavirus update with the Board this evening. We've been reporting since March 19th and through today, August 11th, there's been a total of 360 positive cases. This is an increase of 14 cases since your last Board of Selectmen meeting, when a report was given. That was July 28th, so we've seen approximately one case per day. There's been a lot of days with zero cases, but there have been several days with one, two, threes, and four cases. We are continuing to report the data weekly. As it comes out on a Wednesday from the state, we report on the Thursday related to the town's case count. I'm happy to report that there has been no change in the death data, as has been presented to you for several meetings. From our records at the town clerk's office, it remains 38 deaths were COVID-related for Shrewsbury residents. This in context with the 360 cases is a decrease in percentages from that time. And in context, we have less than 0.9, we have 0.9% total cases in the town of Shrewsbury on approximately 37,000 population and 0.1% total deaths. The town of Shrewsbury maintains a staffing level of about 50% with employees in on an A week and then employees in on a B week, but we are maintaining schedules by appointment only for those who must access the building and continue to see that the largest number of appointments are being made in the town clerk's office for marriage certificates and notary and the Board of Health office for collection of sharps. Primarily, the other departments have been able to transact business over the phone via online services or meeting someone in the parking lot, so an outside case. What I did want to share with the Board and the public this evening, and the town of Shrewsbury put out a release today that came from the state, the state is starting to report data in several different ways now that data is evolving. And this is a report from the past two weeks of July 22nd through August 5th of average daily case rate per 100,000 of COVID by Massachusetts cities and towns. I'm not sure if you can see my mouse, but the town of Shrewsbury is the green square-like area proximate to Worcester, which is in yellow. So we maintain a green status, which is a good status, of less than four cases per 100,000. What I learned today on a call with the Mass Municipal Association and DESI and the Lieutenant Governor was that this data is being used also in how schools will be reopening in the fall. The red municipalities are strongly encouraged to go remote only. The yellow communities are allowed to go in a hybrid model, and the green is encouraged to go in-person or hybrid model. So you may be seeing some additional information from the school department related to this. These types of maps and data will be released on a two, an every-week period, but a look-back and a two-week average. So we will be seeing some different types of mapping coming out from coronavirus data from the state at this time. So again, I just want to remind the Board and the public that the coronavirus is still very much with us. Reminder to wear masks, social distance, proper hygiene of washing hands, keeping apart from those who are not in your family, not sharing food or beverages or things like that. So we will, again, continue to push out that educational piece as long as it's needed. Also, I met this morning with our inspectional services team, including the police lieutenants and the fire chief related to the Governor's new gathering order and the restrictions related to bars that may have not served food. And we are taking an approach of education first if there's complaints that come in related to these orders, and then if necessary, moving forward with the ticketing process if necessary. But all of our departments are fully on board and will be keeping each other apprised of matters as they come about related to any incidence of not obeying the order. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Board members, any questions for Ms. Lass? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so we will move. Oh, Mr. Kane. Yeah?
I just want to thank, I just want to thank Kristin for such a thorough, comprehensive report. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. Item number six is to review and act on the intermunicipal agreement for participation in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition with the town of Spencer for FY21 through FY25. Ms. Lass, do you have any further information on this for the Board?
Sure. So for several years now, the town of Shrewsbury has been involved in the Central Mass Stormwater Collaborative and, excuse me, Coalition. This agreement, it would be extending our involvement with this group from fiscal '21 through fiscal '25. We feel that we have greatly benefited from joining in this coalition, especially with the stormwater permit coming down from the EPA and our ability to lobby at the state level regarding this. So it's just a continuation of the group that we've already been in, just formality at this point. I know Mr. Howland's on the line, so if the Board members have any questions that I'm not able to answer, I'm sure he could answer as well.
Any questions for Mr. Howland?
I do have a question, either for Mr. Howland or Assistant Town Manager Lass.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. LeBeau.
I'm reading item six in the agreement. Is this telling me that the cost is ramping up after year one of this five-year agreement?
Mr. Howland or Ms. Lass?
Or is that telling me that it's $4,000 divided by four and it's $1,000 every year? I just find this wording a little confusing.
John, if I'm not mistaken, it's $4,000 per year, and that's been the same number that we've had for the last five years or so, however long we've been in the coalition.
The invoice for this year is $1,000, so I think I read it
Okay.
that it's $1,000 per year. I apologize, I don't have 100% confidence in that.
Where I was just looking at the invoice also, and where it's $1,000, that makes me think it's probably just split.
Madam Chairman?
Perhaps, Ms. How, yes, Mr. Kane.
Perhaps we should table this until we're all comfortable.
Ms. Lass? I think we should.
I think you could do two things. You could table it until you're all comfortable, or you can vote upon the contingency that it is $1,000 a year, and if it's not, we can bring it back.
For me, I'm looking at the next item, which is to review and act on the payment, and the payment is the FY21 dues, and I see it on the invoice as $1,000. I'm comfortable moving forward with this, but I will certainly defer it if other Board members feel we should.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I saw the same thing. The invoice is for FY21 dues, not for a quarter, so I'm comfortable with it also, but if other people want to wait, that's fine. But I think it is $1,000 a year.
Madam Chairman, I mean, I agree. I think that's what it means, but I find this wording just very odd. I mean, why they spell it out this way as $4,000 and no sense for '22 through '25? I mean, I guess it's all in the mind of whomever put pen to paper, but to me, this is not clear, and I would prefer waiting.
There may be, if I may, Ms. Cassavant.
Go ahead.
There may be a point where they may charge us $4,000 next year, and it's good for fiscal '22 to fiscal '25, but if you would like to wait, we'd be happy to do some additional research.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Lass, if we, oh, go ahead, Mr. Samia.
I'm comfortable moving forward. I'd be comfortable as well, authorized, and whether it's up to $4,000 per year from '22 to '25, but that's where I'm at with it, just so we can move past it. So I'm comfortable moving forward with a contingency or even up to $4,000 for '22 to '25, understanding the drafting's not great, but we know what the maximum liability is. Just my thoughts.
Just one quick question, Ms. Lass or Mr. Howland. We have been a part of this coalition, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So this isn't a new charge, it's just something that we must get charged yearly?
Right.
And just for, so Shrewsbury is actually a founding member of the coalition. There was 13 towns, and we were one of the 13, original 13.
Right. So why don't we take a vote on it as it is, and then it, you know, if it turns out that this isn't the correct invoice, we will bring it back in another meeting and review it, reevaluate it. Is that something that the Board will be comfortable with?
Madam Chairman, it's a five-year agreement, so I'm confused. If we, if we vote to agree to this and we're asked to put our signatures on it, then, I mean, I don't quite understand how it could be a contingent vote.
I think the contingent vote would be you would be voting yes based upon us going back tomorrow and verifying that it is $1,000 a year, and if it is not, then the vote does not stand. But if, again, if you're not comfortable with that, we're happy to take it up at another meeting.
I can, I can live with that, with that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, then let's move forward with a vote on item six, which is just to review and act on the agreement for participation. And then item seven is where we actually talk about the payment. So I'll take a motion on item six.
Madam Chairman, I vote, I move the Board vote to approve, excuse me, to approve the intermunicipal agreement for participation in the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition with the town of Spencer with the contingency that for the entire term of this agreement, fiscal '21 through '25, the town's matching share is $1,000 annually, and should it be any amount greater than that, this matter come back for this Board for further review.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? There being none, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. Okay, then item number seven is where we review and act on the payment for the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition with the town of Spencer for the FY20, '21 dues, which is shown on this invoice as $1,000.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chairman, I move the board approve payment of the invoice for the intermunicipal agreement with the, the town of Spencer for stormwater management, also contingent on the board understanding the annual payment for the five-year term of, the five-year term of the agreement.
Second.
Okay, the motions are made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, there being none, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
And Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And Ms. Cassavant, aye. Okay, item number eight is to review and act to sign the September 1st, 2020 state primary election warrant.
Move the board sign the warrant for the state primary on September 1st.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hey, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And Ms. Cassavant, aye. Item number nine is to review and act on the road closure request from Pride Environmental for a temporary road closure of Lake Street at Route 20 for the purposes of installing a sewer vault in Lake Street associated with the BT pump station project for one night from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM during the week of August 17th, 2020. And Mr. Howland, will you be sharing some further information about this with us?
Yes, I will. Good evening. For the record, Jeff Howland, DPW Director. So we are putting a meter or a vault in this, in the middle of Lake Street, which is over our existing force main and, and in the new gravity line that will tie into the BT pump station located on Barton Trimount or Aggregates property currently under construction. The vault is fairly large, and with the, with the contractor wanting to get it done in one night, the vault is fairly deep. We also have extensive other utilities that they have to put the vault in between. We have a water main, there's a gas main, and they're putting it on top of our existing sewer. They'd like to do this at night, and will, more than likely, it will be done on August 20th, which is Thursday night. But once I get a better idea, obviously weather dependent, is, they'd like to close it so that they can make sure that they can get that work done in one night. If not, it could be multiple nights.
Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kane?
Just a quick question. Jeff, how, how confident are you that it can be completed in one night, given the complexity of what's below ground? And how confident are you in the as-built plan?
So the contractor has done as-built, and he's already connected, so we had to replace the gravity line in Lake Street from our Route 20 down to this. We had, we upsized it, and so he, he has a very good idea where it is. They have tested the locations of the existing gas main and the water main, so they're very confident in the location. And, and with that, we also verified that the size of the vault would fit in where we need it to go. So they're confident that it can be done, it's just that it, it's a lot of work, they'd like to be able to have a truck on one side, the excavator on the other, which basically takes up, and for safety reasons, takes up most of Route of Lake Street. Assuming that we can get detailed officers, there will also be detail there, but we, it will be, a good portion of Lake Street will be, will be inaccessible. So for safety reasons, we, they prefer to make sure that they can do it, and, and they assured me that they'll do it in one night.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other question? Mr. DePaolo?
I might ask, Mr. Howland, if, if we're not picking up a specific night, how, I'm, I'm assuming that there's going to be sign boards up notifying people that that road's going to be closed a couple of days ahead. If they don't know which night they're going to do it, how is that going to work out?
So the contractor, the foreman for the contractor is on vacation this week. He's back on Monday, which is why we were planning on Thursday, the 20th. We'll know more on Monday, and then DPW will actually put out a code red to the local people along Lake Street and North or South Quinsigammon, so that we'll let them know. But this message boards will go up on Monday to let everybody know that it's scheduled for the, the night of the 20th, so 20th into the 21st. We will also, though, look at the weather forecast, just to make sure we have a clear night. If it looks like it's going to rain, or it's even questionable that they can't get it done, we, we will pick an alternate night, which gut feeling will then end up being the following week, because we wouldn't want to do it on a Friday night. The contractor is willing to go Sunday night when we actually have less truck traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, not that I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move the board approve the Lake Street road closure request being made by Raymakers for sewer improvement work on Lake Street to take place on an overnight during the week of August 17th.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. No further discussion. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 10 is to review and act on the road closure request from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, for a closure of a portion of Boylston Circle between Wheelock Street and Meadow Farm Drive from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, beginning in September, for an approximate six-week duration. So, Mr. Howland, do you want to tell us a little bit more about that as well, please?
Yes, so this is the second phase of our Boylston Circle drainage improvements that we started actually two years ago. And this will continue the drain line that is just north of Gulf Street, and that will encompass drainage to the top of the hill, which is up near Stone Meadow. So similar to that we did last year, I think it was two years ago, where we closed Boylston Circle from Gulf Street to Wheelock. This gets a little bit more complicated because it actually encompasses Gulf Street and goes further south on Boylston Circle, so therefore we will close it at Stone Meadow and at Wheelock and have people go Wheelock to Gulf Street.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
Just one question. I, I mean, I know we're still working on schools, but there was no opportunity to do this before the anticipated start of the school year?
That's a very good question. We tried, we just ran into delays. Some of it was on our end, due to we don't have an inspector that could watch the project, but also on the contractor with timing. We did try to have this done over the summer.
Mr. Howland, have you spoken with the school department about the potential impact on bus routes?
I have not. We have, we have been in contact, however, with this, with the bus company, I mean, with, with, with the school, and which, as long as they know in advance, they can plan for it, which is what we've always, what we've talked to them about, or they've talked to us about.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
I mean, I'm just reading the agenda item in the, the agenda item in the agenda and also the letter, and I want to check with DPW Director Howland, is the effective start date September 1st? I think we need to tack this down a little bit.
So the, I think September 1st is, what, a Thursday?
So we're all, we're all checking our calendars.
Yeah, so am I.
Isn't it a Tuesday? Isn't it election day? All right.
So I'm, I'm guessing we're August 31st, to be honest, because that's a Monday.
Okay, and Madam Chairman, if I may follow up.
Of course.
I, I mean, may, shall we say for, you know, an approximate six weeks duration gives me a little, I prefer to be a little more precise, so could we say for six weeks, or should we look at, you know, the calendar of our meeting if we have to extend this? But I, I'm uncomfortable with a motion for approximately six weeks.
So the, Mr. LeBeau, so the contractor actually told us three weeks. We weren't overly comfortable with three weeks, and we felt six was probably more appropriate. We think it'd be done less than six weeks.
Right.
Now they say six weeks, and hopefully they're done quicker. If they hit ledger or whatever, or we have bad weather, which is what hampered the previous Phase One, we actually had bad weather, which we ended up with that snowstorm that did not allow the contractor to finish the work in a reasonable timeframe, which, which, I'm hoping we don't hit snow in early September, but the last one, we started in, I think, October, and then we hit that snowstorm in early December, which did not allow them to finish until the following spring. Where here, it, the contractor, which is Board of Construction, indicated that they felt, they, they were planning on three weeks. I think six is a maximum of six.
So six weeks, Madam Chairman, if I may, six weeks takes us to October 12th. It is a holiday, but perhaps the contractor would like to work, so a motion for August 31st to October 12th should cover this?
Okay, I see Mr. Howland nodding, so yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the agenda, not at the meeting right at the moment.
Correct. Okay. All right, if Mr. Howland is comfortable with that motion, we can.
Madam Chairman.
Are you making, are you, Mr. LeBeau?
Madam Chairman, I move the board approve the road closure request for Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, for a closure of a portion of Boylston Circle between Wheelock Street and Meadow Farm Drive from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, beginning August 31st and ending no later than October 12th.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. Item number 11 is to review and act to authorize the town manager to finalize the acquisition of 268 North Quinsigammon Avenue pursuant to Article 24 of the August 8th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting. Now, Ms. Lass, did you want to add anything to this before we vote?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Cassavant. This item on the agenda and the next item of the agenda both are relative to the town meeting vote that occurred on Saturday. Town meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen to enter into the final purchase of this property, and the vote this evening would allow for the town manager to execute any final documents and submit any final payments relative to this land sale.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Madam Chair, just one question.
Mr. Samia?
Through you to the Assistant Town Manager. Kristen, just a quick question under the both amendments for 11 and 12. It says 10 days after approval. Are we on target for that?
Yes, we should be. The manager got in touch with both owners after town meeting on Saturday, so we should be on track for, for making those deadlines. We'll double check on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, there being none, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move the board authorize the town manager to finalize the acquisition of 268 North Quinsigammon Ave pursuant to Article 24 of the August 8th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. For the discussion, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 12 is to review and act to authorize the town manager to finalize the acquisition of 274 North Quinsigammon Ave pursuant to the Article 25 of the August 28th, August 8th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting.
Ms. Cassavant.
Anything further to add?
No, just repeat, I would just repeat the comments that I had stated related to the last land sale. This is related to the town meeting article that occurred on Saturday.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
I move the board authorize the town manager to finalize the acquisition of 274 North Quinsigammon Ave pursuant to Article 25 of the August 8th, 2020 Annual Town Meeting.
Second, second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, that brings us to old business, which is item number 13, to review and act on the establishment, charge and goals of the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. Board members, in your drive, you will find a document that we have gone over multiple times now. I believe this document now includes everyone's edits and changes. So we have an opportunity now to put a stamp on it and approve it, or if there are any further questions or comments or changes that people want to make, now would be the time.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
I apparently have such difficulty with following the operative document. Could you, this has the red line in which language was added to the fourth line down, the task force will include a member of the Board of Selectmen. Am I on the operative document?
Okay, so there's two documents. One is the charge of the committee, and one is the call. Now, the charge of the committee is just one document, and it just looks like, it doesn't have any red lines, it's just plain, it doesn't have any highlighting. And then the charge of the committee, there's one document where it started, and it was in our drive, and then board members were able to submit edits through the town manager, and so then you will see the redlined copy. And then if you go until the last one, which is labeled 13, Red Line Call for Members, which is the one that was just added, the final one that was added, with red line and highlighting, that is the one that we are looking at right now.
So.
Because it incorporates everyone's edit.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you, that the document we're working on is the Board of Selectmen will establish a diversity comma. Is that the document?
The document says, "The Board of Selectmen is seeking individuals to serve on a task force to address..."
Okay, fine, I got it.
Okay.
Right. I, I just have one que, first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their clarifying language. I would just like to make sure we have understanding, I'm not so sure if I'm understanding the first bullet. I may be seeing this in a too restrictive fashion. Knowledge and experience with issues of diversity and inclusion slash diversity training. I'm reading that to mean that a person has been in that facilitating training mode greatly limits who would be available to serve. Am, am I reading this too restrictively, or is, or is it, should it be interpreted that those who have been part of such training would, would be covered? I'd just like clarification on that.
So I, I'm happy to jump in unless another board member would like to, but the way that I read it was, you've had some experience in diversity or inclusion training, so I almost took it to be that you might have had this type of training in your workplace, but I can also see where you would have looked at it differently, and I think that both are correct. I don't think that there's a wrong type of training or skill to bring to this with regard to bullet one. If you look at the line above where it says, "Not all task force members will have expertise in all areas, but task force members will possess some of the following qualities or skill sets." That may help people to understand that they don't have to possess all of That may help people to understand that they don't have to possess all of these things, but maybe just some of them.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So as long as one checks one of those boxes, if you will, they're covered.
Correct.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that I'm reading it in the appropriate fashion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or points to discuss?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Samia?
Just one quick thing on this. Do we want to make clear that we're looking for individuals that can commit to one year? Given that the charge is to deliver a report no later than one year? So that, just to spell out the commitment that we're expecting?
Yes, that's probably a good point. I feel like we get so close to things and we're assuming that if someone sends a letter that they're understanding by reading this that it's a one year, but we probably would be wise to spell that out somewhere in the document. Did you have a suggested spot in which to put it? We could put it right at the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could put it in the beginning and just a simple statement that the commitment's expected to be a one-year commitment. So it's either that or below expertise or somewhere, just to call it out that the expectation is a one-year commitment. I'm not wedded to anywhere to put it, just to be clear that that's how long we're looking for.
Okay, so if we vote to approve this this evening, I will work to make sure that that line is added in an appropriate location in the document.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. DiPaolo?
I don't have a problem putting it in there, but I don't ever recall having to write that in any of our language creating committees when they have to make a report a year later. I think it's implicit that they need, they need to be able to make the commitment. You want to put it in, you can put it in. I don't ever remember doing it. And I don't think we ever had a problem because if somebody needs to get off the committee for, because of unforeseen circumstances, they're going to have to get off anyways. So I, if you want to put it in, fine, but I, I think it's implicit. If you're going to make a report a year from when it starts, then you're making a year commitment. I don't think we've ever said you have to commit to a certain period of time in any of the committees we've done. But if you want to do it, you know, right, fine, but I really don't think it's necessary.
Madam Chair, I'm not, I'm not that wedded to it. I just was just trying to clarify, but it's fine.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, I think we are finally ready to move on this. The one thing I would want to clarify would be the deadline to apply. Mr. LeBeau, were you trying to jump in there?
Well, I, I did see that, and I mean, actually, we have placeholders under the proposed timeline as well.
So if you look at the, the next document, are you looking at the one where the proposed timeline is changed to, at their initial meeting, the task force will develop a meeting schedule and timeline so that a written update is provided to the Board of Selectmen quarterly and a final report of findings and recommendations is submitted no later than 12 months after the date of the initial meeting?
I guess I'm not.
That's okay. It's difficult because we're not together and we're not able to look at everything. So this was an edit that I had proposed because when you go back to the charge for the committee, we talk about having to provide a quarterly update written to the board, but also having a report within a year. And just having served on other committees, it just takes time for people to get torn in and for the committee to organize itself on a night when they're going to meet that works for everyone on the committee. So it just seemed to make sense that until they have had their initial meeting, that the clock wouldn't start on that 12 months. Rather than trying to hold them to a date.
No, thank you for the, thank you for the clarification. And I'm on, I'm on the right page right now.
No problem. And then the only other thing would be, do we want to give this a three-week window for people to apply? Because that would bring us to, I think, September 1st? Or do we want to go one more week and give people longer, given that life gets in the way and it's a busy time of year when school gets started again and things of that nature?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
I would ask that we consider extending it to the middle of September. Families have so much going on right now between school-aged children and the elementary, high school, let alone secondary. I think affording an extra week is in our interest so that people can figure out not only their family commitments. Will they have one, two, or three children at home, or will they have one child at home by way of example? And for those who are perhaps starting to go back to work, but they're not sure where they will be, I think it's in our interest to just extend it that extra couple of weeks to give people a real opportunity to give this, not just a knee-jerk, gee, what do I think I'm going to, you know, be back to work or not? I think it's in our interest. So I would ask for the mid-September, the 15th perhaps. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
No, the 15th is mid-September. It's also the first day of school potentially for Shrewsbury Public Schools right now. That's what it's set as. So people will know by then what their immediate future at least will look like. So I am comfortable with setting September 15th as the day, the deadline for letters of interest to be submitted to the board.
Madam Chairman, I think.
My colleagues don't have an objection. I would appreciate that.
I think that's a good idea. We meet next on the 22nd, following the meeting on the fifth, the proposed deadline for applications, the 15th. The office could put them together and get them out to us and possibly we could have it on the agenda, the 22nd for appointments.
Okay. That's, that's a good timeline. All right. If anyone else were good, then we can go ahead and entertain a motion on item number 13.
Madam Chairman, I move the board adopt the charge to establish a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. In our drive noted as item 13, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee, 8/11/2020.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, item number 14 is to review an act on the goals of the Board of Selectmen. Okay, Mr. Kane?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it under 13. Perhaps at our next gen, at our next meeting, you could place an item whereby the board could hear from our colleagues and make our appointment to this group.
I will note that. And board members, if you are interested in being appointed to this group, you can let me know. That way we can, we can let me know through the town manager or the assistant town manager and we can then go ahead and make an appointment from our committee as to who will serve in this capacity. We're going to move on to item number 14, which is to review an act on the goals of the Board of Selectmen. So board members, there are two documents in your drive. One is a clean version and one is a redline version. We want to take a look at the clean version. And that's what we can base any further discussion on this evening.
Madam Chair, Cassavant?
Ms. Lass?
Would you like me to give the board and the public any overview of your goal process? Or would you like to just move forward with discussing this goal document?
No, I think that it would be wonderful if you'd like to give the public an overview. I feel like we've been talking about it so much that it seems redundant, but it probably isn't if people are just tuning into this for the first time. So please, go ahead.
Thank you so much. For the public's knowledge and to refresh the board's knowledge, the Board of Selectmen has been meeting since last October in a workshop model related to developing their goals for the town of Shrewsbury. The town manager has prepared several educational documents to the Board of Selectmen on what goals are and what municipal or town government goals could look like. And out of several working sessions, the document before you this evening has been developed with the input of all of the Board of Selectmen members and has been massaged into what you see as today. So with that, we just wanted to make sure that the public and the board was refreshed that this has been an evolving process over the past 10 months or so that the board has been working towards. If the board were to adopt these goals this evening, the manager anticipates preparing his goals that would cascade from your goals and then directing department heads in various departments to cascade their goals in order to accomplish one collective unified front moving forward to serve the residents of the town of Shrewsbury.
Thank you, Ms. Lass. That was very thorough. So board members, as we take a look at this document one more time, it should incorporate the different changes from the many times that we've talked about this. And so again, if there's anyone who would like to speak about the goals or make any additional edits before we possibly vote on them this evening.
Madam Chair?
Mr. DiPaolo?
I'm very comfortable with these as a good starting point in a long-range, as part of a process of long-range strategic planning. I think we needed to start somewhere. I think this is just a pretty basic nuts and bolts approach. And I think it'll help us get through certainly the next year and give the manager and the department head some direction as to where we're all going to be trying to go over the next year to deliver the type of service that we think the residents of the town have come to expect. So I, I think it's a good place to start. Obviously, we can work on, on, on this some more for the, for the next year, where maybe we can, we can kind of ramp it up a little bit. But I think this is a good place to start, rather than trying to get the perfect and just not getting it done.
Right, I agree with you, Mr. DiPaolo, that it is to be a living document that we would revisit on an annual basis to make sure that it's still reflective of the goals and priorities of the board and of the community. Any further questions or comments or discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Kane?
You may recall early on, I was uncomfortable with this layout. And it's perhaps, it's because I'm, I don't spend a lot of time, if you will, at 30,000 feet thinking about a variety of these issues the way perhaps other people do. I, I look at this, the top three items, the Board of Selectmen Directive, Board of Selectmen Directive, Board of Select, Board of Selectmen Directive. I think at least two are the result of what's just going on in the world today. And the third, housing, remains a bit of an enigma in my mind. What troubles me is that we don't have economic development slash competitiveness as one of our top four goals. I, I talk to the people of Shrewsbury, as we all do, and I see much more concern over what I describe as the basic blocking and tackling of municipal government. I, I see more recent conversation about, well, the board took action this evening regarding inclusivity. I hear periodic concern for climate change. Given what I do during the day, I probably, well, in addition to our colleague Selectmen LeBeau, I probably live the reality of climate change more and have a financial stake in the impacts of climate change more than most because I work with folks who've been working out in the environment for most of their lives and they have seen and understand and deal with the impacts. But what I hear from people in town is concern for too much housing. And what I hear from people in town is the concern for economic development and competitiveness. And I think economic development slash competitiveness is something that is worthy of a top goal of the Board of Selectmen. I, I look at the tax rate. We have the lowest tax rate around and yet you'll notice that the economic flight from Worcester has gone primarily to Auburn because transportation and location always trump tax rates. So that means we have to be even more targeted in how we work with business on making Shrewsbury an easier place to develop. Now, the reality is, I'm seeing years ago, town meeting had a reputation of not being willing to hear developers' thoughts and change zoning. I think that has been changed as, a good example is Saturday's vote for the zoning change out on Route 70. That puts more emphasis on, than what is our challenge? A challenge is that people don't find in the marketplace our inspectional services department to be welcoming in a group that seeks to get to yep. They find it to be the exact opposite. Now, many are reluctant to express that thought out of the fear for retribution, frankly. Because if you work in that industry, you know how difficult it can be if you are quote unquote with a, if you're a marked person, if you will. So that is a bigger concern of mine, a primary concern of mine, because we know looking forward, we have an anemic revenue base. So to me, all of this happy talk only comes from either increased state aid, which I don't think we should be dependent on. We have to take care of our own issues in town. We're uniquely competitive relative to electric rates and the ability to have the power company so coordinated with construction and other activities in town. So I think we need a full paragraph on economic development and competitiveness in the marketplace. I think that is a, I don't think that's something we should just push off to another point in history or allow another board because the other thing that, that does concern me about such, I don't know, such a long document and then the, the language support and resources, et cetera, is that I also think, as we heard at this town meeting, you know, people get up and they hold in their right hand the master plan. Well, the master plan includes the language that we will do this, therefore we should do that or we shouldn't do this. And I can just see the day that a town meeting is formed and not only does that person have the master plan in their left hand, they have our goals in the right hand. And to me, it's boxing ourselves in with, with this entire document is troubling enough. But I think without an economic development slash competitiveness component, I really question if we're, if we're focusing on what, what I'm hearing from people in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Board member response?
Madam, Madam Chair? I guess I'm looking this, looking at this as a short-term document to get us through the next year or so as we, as we put together a comprehensive, long-term strategic plan. I, I will say that this thing has been bounced around now in the recent past for what, two months? You know, certainly this can be improved upon, but if, if Mr. Kane has something to put in here for economic development, I'd be happy to look at it and add it in. But at the same time, we've been talking about this and now when we, we think we're at the end. and now when we, we think we're at the end to start, um, suggesting that perhaps this document isn't the right document, I, I think kind of puts us in a, in a bad place. I agree, economic development, um, as I look at it, probably should be more defined in here, but I think as a starting point and, um, the type of document that this is supposed to be, that, a little bit more high level, um, which quite honestly, um, I think Mrs., Ms. Loz could testify to that, I, I'd like to get down more into the, into the nuts and bolts of it. I think for what this is trying to do and trying to set the framework, um, is appropriate for the next year. But certainly, um, if, if Mr. Kane would like to add something in, specifically about economic development this evening, um, I'm, I'm, I'm more than willing to, to, uh, to, uh, vote to incorporate that in here. But, um, I, I just, I don't, I don't think we can keep dragging this thing along and, um, not come to some point where we have to say, okay, this is what we have to work with now, let's move ahead. Economic development aside, I really don't think that this is a, um, is a, is a bad document. And so, you know, that, that's where I am. I mean, we, we could keep talking about this forever. So, if we got something for economic development and everybody agrees, um, let's put it in. All the other, all the other things that, that we could be doing, I think we need to be working over the next, over this next year to set up the goals and objectives for '22. And if we do it right, it would be '22, probably through '25. But we need something to get us through this year and to help the manager and the department heads focus. And the longer we, we go into the year, um, the less effective the document's going to be. So, um, as I said, economic development, absolutely, uh, more than, uh, agreeable to put that in. But, you know, quite honestly, let's move this thing forward. Let's come to some conclusion.
Mr. Samia. I think you might be muted. Okay, well, while you work on that, can I offer as a compromise? Oh, there you are. Go ahead.
I was toggling, sorry. So, so here's what I think. I think that, I agree with Mr. DePaolo, it's an interim. Candidly, I'd like to see us a year from now go a step further. I think we're a little specific in these goals. I think the visioning that I see for a lot of the municipalities out there have much broader statements from the Board of Selectmen and community that cascade down. That being said, we have a document now that, that I think for, through compromising and discussions has brought us to where we are today, uh, to, to at least start it forward. But a suggestion, a, a statement that I had come up with for a mission statement for economic development, I'll just throw out there, is for a goal that the town of Shrewsbury will be known for its strong commercial and industrial economic development, cultivating a strong, diverse and collaborative business economy and a strong financial management. So, something like that, we could put in there to, to Selectmen Kane's point. That is a concern, we do hear that. That the goal is that we're striving to create a collaborative environment to foster growth. That's a possibility, language like that, that is aspirational, but it's also cultural, just as a, to, to move that point forward and integrate it in the document that we have in hand. We could add one other thing that, um, about the Shrewsbury Town Center in light of the zoning will be revitalized and feature vibrant businesses, residences, civic services, and serve as a welcoming and popular destination place for all residents. So, I just wanted to offer that, possible suggestions to move it forward, incorporate it in these goals and, and, uh, set the tone this year for '21 and then move forward for '22 with a broader document that we'll cover for several years ahead.
Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Kane.
I would like to thank, uh, my colleague, Mr. Samia, for those two offers of language and ask that we include them this evening in a Board of Selectmen Directive, Economic Development forward slash, uh, welcoming business environment. And I would just like to add a third item to John's two, and that is that we become a town that is known for and in a regulatory environment that is welcoming to business. Period. Very simple, but I think it's a clear directive. As to Mr. DePaolo's observations, I've been on the board, I think, 11 years now. Uh, I think this is the first time we've wrestled with this document, and I'll leave it at that. I don't recall the department heads in previous years wandering aimlessly on Maple Avenue, not knowing what they should be doing. So, I, I continue to go back to my initial comments at our first meeting where I questioned the value and the time stock that this has become. Now, uh, it is what it is and if the majority wants to move forward with these goals, wonderful. But I continue to, uh, on meeting whatever it might be, just as I have in previous meetings, question, uh, this document, how it's set up and why we even need this extensive document. To me, we're boxing ourselves. Things change tomorrow. Nowhere in six or eight months is it going to be, well, that was our, that was our first kick at it and so forth. That was an interim to get us started. So, once, once this is put out on our letterhead, it will become gospel. It will then be interpreted in any which way it can be interpreted by folks. That's my concern, was my concern on meeting one, it remains my, my concern this evening. I again want to thank John for those two offers. I'd like to include my third, simple, straightforward line, and, um, I'm ready to move forward this evening.
Okay, so to summarize.
Ms. Cassavant.
Mr. Samia. Oh, Ms. Loz.
Uh, thank you. If I may, um, on page five of the document, um, under Strategic Goals, Community Development, I think that hits upon all three items that Mr. Kane has noted. I wanted to just clarify for myself and the staff that you'd like the, the points that were referenced by Mr. Samia and Mr. Kane also under a Board of Selectmen Directive, uh, titled Economic Development, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we have this inclusion with climate change. I, I'm befuddled how that's on a Board of Select, we're not a congressional committee, but whatever. And then housing, fine. I think economic development in this town allows us to have a chance to address climate change, housing, and a variety of other things within this document. I don't think we can turn our back on economic development and the reputation we have in the commercial development area. As you recall, Kristen, we have talked many times how we deal with this collision we have of our commercial zoning along Route 9, Route 20, and then residential right behind it. One of our priorities, and I believe it could be covered again, though the language is rather amorphous, uh, is how we actually deal with that. Other more urban centers have dealt with it perfectly or imperfectly. That needs to be something for the planning department in your office to really wrestle with because we have to create a climate where people come in and deal with the existing and how they renovate and how they make that work. We don't have hundreds of acres of open track, we don't have a town-owned industrial park. So, I, I, I think it's critically important and worthy of a Board of Selectmen Directive, given the way this document is set up.
Okay, I think I'm clear. I just wanted to, um, compartmentalize that, um, I think that a lot of it is under, um, Strategic Goals C, Community Development, but we will certainly insert it as a Board of Selectmen Directive based upon the board's comments this evening.
Yeah, thank you. My point is, it shouldn't be, it can be restated down below, but it's worthy of being one of the four.
Understood. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
I haven't, uh, contributed to this conversation. It's been very interesting to hear what my colleagues have to say. Um, and I think, uh, several of you have had some, uh, you know, very salient points. I do, um, I do agree with Mr. Kane, as he's called it to our attention, um, to, uh, highlight, for lack of a better word, our commitment to economic development. I think that simply reflects, um, what we've been doing all along. I mean, I believe that the board has been, um, right out in front for economic development for as long as I've been on the board. Perhaps most recently evidenced in a big way by, uh, Lake Way Commons and, and the work, um, that the board and the town did, uh, to accomplish that redevelopment of the former Spags property. Uh, I, I've, I've often heard it said that, uh, the, the previous manager was really surprised during his job interview. Uh, and we all know, like the present town manager, they're two gentlemen who do a great deal of prep work and anticipation, uh, that, uh, that the, the previous town manager was, uh, actually surprised by receiving, uh, one of the questions in his interview, or the first question, I don't recall, I wasn't part of the process, was to address economic development. So, uh, I think it should be featured. As Mr. Kane said, that document is going to be out there. I'm not quite sure it's going to be gospel, but, um, you know, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want some developers to have that in their hands and look at it and say, uh, I don't see a great commitment by this community to economic development. So, um, I, I think it should be included. I appreciate Mr. Kane calling it to our attention, uh, prior to adoption rather than anyone, um, you know, calling it out to us afterwards. Uh, I, I'd be fine with incorporating the two bullet points from Selectmen Samia and the third bullet point, um, from Selectmen Kane this evening, if we're comfortable doing that. Or if, uh, if we agree that we're going to get that language, uh, in proper form and vote on it on the next meeting. I'm, I'm not sure, I agree with Mr. DePaolo, we do want to move ahead on this, but we also want to do it right. So, uh, I'm more than willing to vote if we think we can wrap it up this evening. But if not, I'd be happy to vote on it at our next meeting, um, with this language in front of us. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Loz, do you have the language that Mr. Kane, um, suggested about a regulatory environment that is welcoming to business? Or would you like him to email that over to you?
Uh, we can certainly pull it from the transcript of the tape, but if he'd like to email that over to us, we can take that as well. Same with Mr. Samia's comment. So, we can certainly grab it from the tape. I did not write it down word for word, but Ms. Clemmie is taking minutes and I'm sure the two of us could, uh, post that, that together.
Okay, so if we're going to add those then, in summary, we are adding those as board directives. If those, um, three items are then added, I think that would bring us to a point where we would be, or I would be comfortable voting on this, this evening, knowing that we're going to have those three as we discussed. If that's the case with my colleagues, we can move forward with this. Otherwise, we will have to bring it back next week.
No. Madam Chair, I mean, if everybody else is okay with that, I'm fine with it. Just like this, I, I would just like to say though, as far as value to a document such as this, um, even though it, it may be imperfect, that we have heard over the past couple of years, um, at least I have, um, and I think, um, as a, uh, from, from the manager, I think the board has heard that he would like some more concrete direction, uh, on, on where, um, we would like him to take the organization. And I have heard it from, um, department heads, um, and overall, uh, just in discussions with, with the manager, this manager and the previous, um, about taking the time to step back long-term and big picture so we can get a framework, um, of how we want to see this organization run, um, and the type of services, um, at all levels, from economic development to, uh, resident services, et cetera, um, should be handled. So, um, I think this is important and I think this is a good first step. Um, I, I'm sure there are things that we could do better in it, but, um, I do think it gives guidance. I do think people are looking for it and I think it's going to help us in the long term and certainly, um, help us to, um, start on the next step, um, which will be more comprehensive than this one will be.
Thank you. Mr. DePaolo? Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
I'm comfortable moving forward as modified, um, this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I will entertain a motion to do so, please.
Madam Chairman, I move, uh, the board adopt the goals. Document is presented, uh, before us this evening, with the inclusion of the two, uh, bullet points provided by, uh, Selectmen Samia relative to, um, I'm sorry, Selectmen Kane's, uh, original suggestion that we, uh, create a new directive and also incorporate Selectmen Kane's bullet. Sorry, that was a, not the greatest motion, but I hope the board understands it. And that is, that is my motion.
Second.
Okay. No further discussion. I will take a vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
No.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. That brings us to correspondence. Item number 15 is an email dated July 27th, 2020 from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the FY '20 supplemental budget local Shrewsbury earmark. Item number 16 is an email dated July 28th, 2020 from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the three-month interim budget approved by the legislature and waiting for the governor's signature. Item number 17 is a letter dated July 30th, 2020 from Beth Cassavant Chair to Melinda Springer, 47 Moyl Drive, regarding the order of July 28th, 2020 for nuisance dogs. Item number 18 is an email dated August 3rd, 2020 from Patricia Bledoe of 7th Fifth Avenue regarding lake living. Item number 19 is an email dated August 4th, 2020 from Stanley Ronziak, 562 South Street regarding the new town budget coming up. Item number 20 is a letter dated August 4th, 2020 from Christine Francore, 180 South Quincyman Avenue regarding safety on Lake Quincyman and lack of adequate lake patrol coverage. Item number 21 is a letter dated August 6th, 2020 from Jeffrey Holland, DPW Director regarding the updated status of ongoing construction and projects. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Holland, for that very detailed update. I certainly do enjoy reading about it and learning about the many different projects that BPW is working on in town. Item number 22 is an email dated August 7th, 2020 from Paula Collins, 31 Flag Road regarding Lake Quincyman's safety. Item number 23 is a letter dated August 7th, 2020 from Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, the Sandra Wright Town Clerk, regarding Acting Town Manager, August 10th, 2020 through August 17th, 2020. And that is the end of our agenda. Is there anything else to come before the board in open session? Seeing nothing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DePaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. This meeting is adjourned. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Good night.